I don't know which way this is so good, I don't know if I should go this.
Do you want me to move?
Name sounds familiar, but I don't know.
All rise please.
Are Jen and Dan up there?
We're missing two supervisors. We'll wait until they logged on. Are all the lights on Dave? You sure it's not very bright under here? Just seems dark. Maybe my eyes are failing in my older age.
There you go.
Do these lights go on Dave?
Your boss disurged in the back.
There's Dan. They just turned him up? Thank you. Makes me, I think they do it just to make me crazy. Oh no, their lights are on, it's mad with your eyes.
There's Dan, now we just need Jen.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Lucky enough to have Tom Kelso twice tonight.
Good, how are you?
And we're just waiting for Jen. There she is. Okay, we're ready to get started. I'm on screens, Dan Wood and Jen Herring. And obviously, we're here in persona. Well, good evening everybody and welcome. Before the start of tonight's regular meeting, we met an executive session and we discussed issues of litigation and personnel. Are there any visitors or public comment to start here? Any visitor or public comment? Oh, hearing none, moving on. The next meeting of this board is Tuesday, March 16th at 7:00 PM. If you want to attend remotely, contact administrative offices for the link. Public visioning meeting, Doylestown Township Community Center is a very important meeting, open to the public. It's February 25th at 7:00 PM. It's a Zoom meeting. And to register, you have to contact Susan Shipman. And if you don't get this, contact us at the township and we'll give it to you. Her address is SGS@MKS-D-Architects.com. So that's how you ask her for the link and then you will be participating in this Doylestown Township Community Center meeting on February 25th at 7:00 PM. Okay, the Parks and Rec Department is offering a free virtual program, Know Your Medicare Options. It's very important for all of us to learn our Medicare options. It's on February 17th at 6:30. And to register, you go to myrec.com. Alright, next item on the agenda is approval for the minutes from January 19th, 2021 meeting. Everyone has had a chance to review them, I assume? Is there a motion to approve? I'll make the motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Actually, one small change.
Okay.
On Section B1, the second sentence, it just spells Karen Sweeney's name wrong, it drops one of the Es.
Okay, we'll make that correction. Thank you. Is there a second then? Will you second that with that correction? Jen?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Moody's Investor Services. Everyone had a chance to see this, pretty good news. I think it's excellent news. Moody's has rated us, what, A1, AA, AA1, which is the best rating we can get for their size of our municipality and our population. So I'm very pleased with that. It's the same rating we had in 2017 when we were issued the bond. So when we had the bond issuance. So we're doing great. So thank you. Thank you, and I'm very pleased for that bit of business. And it's a good recognition of our budgeting and our financing and the way we do business in Doylestown Township. So congratulations to the staff and financing, Ways and Means and everybody else who helped split us together and keep us sound. Okay, next item on the agenda, reports from the solicitor.
I have nothing, but we will discuss issues that I'm related to later in the agenda.
Okay. Chief?
Nothing to report.
Well, I want to say something to the chief. Thank you for Crime Watch. I don't know if everybody's getting it, but I'm getting Crime Watch from you. Little blurbs that there's a traffic accident or there's a scam notice. You haven't signed up for Crime Watch. Comes from Doylestown Township Police Department. It'll go right to your inbox, tells you what's going on in the township. So thank you for that, chief. It's a really, really good program. And I know where not to go when there's an accident. So, alright, township engineer?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Manager?
Yes. In your packet is a copy of the flyer that we sent along with Doylestown Borough from Bike and Hike about the $30,000 grant that we received from the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. This is a trail feasibility grant that is studying the potential of a trail from the backside of Central Park to Route 313, the Pools Corner Park and Ride Lot. This is a 2.8 mile long project and it'll connect our 30 miles of trail. In the flyer that went out to almost 500 property owners' residents through the Borough and Township, it addressed the ability to go to a virtual room for the next two weeks. It went, the site went live on Sunday and it will be up through February 28th. And we encourage all those who have received the flyer to go to the room in addition to residents interested in the project. And I'm going to have the gentleman in the back quickly review the room so everyone can see what it looks like. Prior to COVID, an event like this would have occurred on an evening similar to this in a public meeting room. And people would have come to this meeting and they would have basically seen the same thing that is taking place in this virtual room. And as of this afternoon, we've already had close to 70 people log on.
Wow.
And look at it and probably about 30 or 40 have already responded. So the first thing that you would typically do when you come to a room for a meeting, public meeting like this, is you would sign in. And there's a welcome and there's the ability to sign the form, give us your information and everything like that. So that's the first thing, so we can gather that data. The next thing, and you don't have to play it, but there is a nice video that the chair of the Doylestown Community Bike Hike Committee put together about the history of, a little bit of history on Bike Hike Committee as well as this particular project. If you spin to the right a little bit more, you have project information. And I think the very cool thing that Baker Engineers, the bike hike consultant put together, if you look out that window, that is the Pools Corner Park and Ride Lot. So very, you know, on target. So there's information about the project and there's some FAQs that members of the Bike Hike Committee put together, so people can review that as they're going through the room. And you can just see that information there. Thank you. And we'll continue to look at the room. And now you see some maps. You see the local, the map and the local contest that's current as well as more of a regional context for the project. The next is a very large map and this shows the alternatives that are being considered. Since this is a feasibility study, there are a couple of different alternatives of routes to get from the backside of Central Park to Pools Corner. Next are some of the opportunities and constraints that exist for the different options. We then have some photo logs that have been taken that will show you the different locations along the route. And you can zoom in and look at some photos and kind of see how the trail would look along the way. And the last and the most important part is tell us what you think. We really want to know, and this is an opportunity to share with us what you thought of the experience of the virtual room as well as what you think about the project. And I would encourage everyone to participate, whether or not you received a flyer. It's on our website, the link is there as well as in Doylestown Borough. And we just encourage people to attend and we've already begun getting some results, which they're already starting to put up there. So we want your information, we want to hear from you and we want to have you be a part of this process. I think it's a very unique situation in the way the Bike and Hike Committee, Nancy, our liaison, has been really supportive of this virtual room. And I thank Baker Engineers, the consultant, for getting creative and putting this together in lieu of having your typical public meeting, because we can't have 50 to 100 people come into a room like this at this time. So if anyone has any questions, try to answer them and just encourage everyone, even the board members, go online, respond to the room and the survey and let us know what you think.
What were the dates it's going to be online again, Stephanie?
It is live February 14th to the 28th. And the nice thing is, say you start it before you come home from work and you're making dinner and you want to go in and look at the room, but you don't get to finish, you can go back later or the next day. So that's the nice thing. If you can't sleep and want to finish it and look at it at 3:00 in the morning, it's nice that you can do that.
Stephanie, this was Baker Engineering that set this up?
Yes.
Really cool, I love it.
Yeah, they did a really nice job.
Really great way to utilize virtual technology. I love it.
Thank you. I will pass that on to them, they'll be very pleased.
Thanks to the back room there for walking us through that, thank you. Alright, next item on the agenda is the training request from Rick Shaw.
Yes, our fire marshal has requested an overnight training for the, one of his conferences and trainings that he typically goes, since it requires an overnight stay, the board needs to authorize that.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
And I'll second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Did you say yes?
Yes, they did.
There were all eyes on the screen.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is from Director of Operations, the IT server replacement. And it's amazing that it came under the amount that was budgeted at $30,000 to $28,588. Amazing how that happens.
Yep, we've just solicited proposals for the servers. You know, you can't make it, this is what it is. Got the proposal for the servers, we're asking Premier Technologies quotes be approved for supply of the servers, the configuration of the servers and also the licenses for the networks. The total is 28,588.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the gift to Premier Technology Solutions in the amount of $28,588?
I'll make the motion.
I didn't mean to break game out. Thank you. Looking for a second. I'll second the motion.
Sorry, just to confirm, just to confirm, was there any additional discussion? We lost the communication for a moment there.
Oh no, there was no additional communication or discussion except for...
I made a motion, Nancy seconded.
Do you have anything? You, Mr. Technology, smartest person in technology on the screen. No, you're good?
Well, no, it looks fine to me.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
I had a question.
Okay.
I have a question regarding the quote that we've received. Did we just get the quote for the server itself or did that also include the licenses and the configuration and installation?
All of that.
It looks like it was the lowest when it came to just the server.
Yeah, that includes everything, Jen. It doesn't include service after installation however. But includes licensing and...
What I'm saying is...
I think I can answer that question.
What I see for... Okay, thank you.
Let me try to answer and then if not, then we'll figure it out. The quotes for the servers are listed broken out up top. Premier was the lowest bidder for those. The licensing would have been provided by Premier anyway, so we were only buying the hardware from, solicited quotes from those three companies. So the licenses were broken out and then obviously the cost to configure, to install and test the installation of the new server and configure the licenses at each workstation, so.
You good?
So, so did we get, compare the service configuration, installation and testing with other companies?
No.
Or?
No, because that was always going to be provided by...
Based on the hardware?
That was always going to be provided by Premier because they're our IT vendor. The two, other two companies, CEW and Connection, were not going to ever provide the licenses or the installation services.
Okay, but we don't go out to quote for server configuration and installation?
I'm sorry, say that again, please.
We wouldn't get a separate quote for the configuration and installation? It just looks like we're looking at just the hardware when we're comparing the three things that we received?
Correct, so, yeah.
But we don't, there's other parts of the cost that it doesn't look like is included. So if we had like an RFP and we said that we needed all of these elements, then we would be able to compare the different companies, right?
Well, you could have, but the issue is we already have an IT consultant. Just like we have a minister of engineering or a traffic engineer or bike hike consultant, we solicited proposals for our IT services. So for the licensing and the server configuration, installation and testing, we wouldn't have gone back out to bid again for those services. So we just went out to bid for the servers for those simple reasons, that we already have a vendor that would do that work anyway.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Okay, sounds like it's a 5-0. I only have one question, is this going to affect our email accounts at all?
Yeah, it will, but it's actually going to get better. I mean, as far as it has any difference, it's just going to hopefully get better.
Alright, you mean we'll need new passwords and stuff like that?
No.
Okay.
No, we shouldn't need new passwords on...
Look at the chief shaking his head over there. Can't help him a lot. Alright, next item is the Arley Grant Traffic Signal Update, Swamp Road, and go ahead.
Okay, back in 2018 actually, we received an Arley Grant or applied for and we received an Arley Grant. Last year in 2020, the board actually executed an agreement with PennDOT. This portion is for the engineering services to be completed by Panoni for $57,779. This is 100% refunded by the Arley Grant project. So we're just basically asking you to authorize Panoni's scope of work to complete this project.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Okay, continue, Mr. Tom Kelso.
Okay, we have another proposal from Panoni to basically obtain NPDS permits. This, these are permits from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection for approximately 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 structures. And I think that there's two or three structures that are exemptions. The reason why we have to do this work is because when these structures were built some time ago, the, actually DEP was not issuing permits and now that we have to actually do repairs to the structures, we need permits. Unfortunately, the permit process entails survey, endangered species, coming up with some engineering, basically how we're going to make repairs to these structures. And basically to do this work, it's estimated as $69,567.
Okay.
I'm asking for the board's approval. Once we get the permits, we do not have to get them again, we have them forever. So just a one-time, one-and-done requirement.
Okay, everyone understand the situation here? Is there a motion to approve this allocation of $69,567 to Panoni for this investigation, coordination, permitting process?
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Alright, there's a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you.
And again, the testing and permitting process for MS4 program. We have a proposal from GHD, formerly Conestoga Rovers, who've been handling our MS4 program and testing an outfall program for years now. This is for 2021. The amount for their testing this year is, the base bid is $22,948. I'm also asking the board to approve the two additional items that if needed, we would have them worked, would have to be done, which would be additional dye tracing and/or mapping if necessary. And that totals $49,015.
Yeah, last time they had an add-on like this, they came back and asked for the dye testing and tracing. Should they, should we just have this add-on to have an add-on or should they come back and ask for us to?
Yeah, I think that we should, well, they're basically quoting that for the labor to do the dye tracing is $2,137.
If needed.
If needed, right. So if we don't need it, we won't, but if they, if it needs to be done, we at least don't have to come back to you and ask for the additional money.
Why not? I mean, don't they have to tell us it's needed?
Sure. So we can, we can wait on that.
I just want a question.
I think the question is who's going to grant approval for the extra expenditure?
If we say it's okay now, then you'll just do it. So I think if they, if it's needed, then they have to come back and ask for it rather than approve the $5,000.
It seems to me that...
Well, let me...
It seems to me you approve the number, but you make it a condition that it receives board approval before proceeding.
Well, again, the additional ask is only for a total of $4,915. It's not, I understand it's the expense, but the question is, and it's basically, let's say they find an issue, okay? Let's say they have to dye, they have to trace back a problem to its source. If it's already been approved, we can give them the verbal approval for them to do that work in the field when they're there. If not, they've got to stop work, leave, come back, you know, it could be a day, it could be a week later.
Makes sense.
They're remobilizing, so there isn't just the expense of lost time necessary. And again, I think that we've got a good relationship with GHD that they would...
And he's talked to us a lot about the idea that they'll be out of the site and find a problem that they had no idea existed.
Okay.
Maybe the caveat is just to just report back to the board that the fact...
It was used.
...additional dollars were spent, where they were spent, what was done. So there's...
Sure. I could do that.
Paper trail.
Right.
I could do that.
I'll make the, I'll make the motion with that condition.
Okay, there's a motion. I'll second that motion. Okay, with that condition.
I just have one question for Dave. Do you know when the last time they requested the dye tracing was for this study?
Oh, I don't know the answer to that.
It's several years, five, three, five years ago?
Probably at least three, you know, but...
Just to have an idea of how often that happens.
Yeah.
And again, based on results, so it may not be needed at all, they do the testing and find everything's fine and we don't need it.
So you're the guy that they have to get approval from?
Yeah, we'll do that.
And then you'll come back and tell us why.
And we'll report back to the board, sure.
Okay, sounds good. There's a motion, was there?
Nancy seconded.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisors. I have a happy note here to read from Sandra Zadel, who used to be our township assistant township manager years ago. And it's provided to the board, but I promised her I would read it. It's an email from her, she's now manager of Upper Gwinnett Township. Hi ladies. I'm one of them, I guess. Barbara, I know when we, I know when I saw you recently, I mentioned that I am a new resident in the township. I live in Pebble Ridge neighborhood on Stony Lane. We love our home and love living in the township. I wanted to reach out today because on my way to work, I probably drive through eight different municipalities. And by far, the roads in my neighborhood, which is the Pebble Ridge area, were the best plowed besides her own Upper Gwinnett. I wanted to take a moment to give Paul Gar a shout out. I see him so often in my neighborhood along with Chris Ditter, working hard to make sure the project with our curbs and roadways is going well. The Doylestown Township Roads Crew is top-notch and I know the days following a storm are usually full of complaints. I wanted to take a moment to tell you both, that's Stephanie and myself, about the job well done. Thank you and stay warm. Sandra Zadel.
That's awesome.
Yeah, I would really appreciate that comment. And you'll pass that on to Paul and his team?
And they've received that, I think we did forward that to them. And I have to say, I did receive a number of compliments as well with the past storm about the work with the guys. So again, it's the entire public works, Road Department, the Parks Department, Facilities, everybody do a great job.
I like the part where she says she drives through eight municipalities and like, we're the best. Not competitive at all here, okay. Moving on to, oh, sorry, other supervisors, I'm going to just, Nancy, do you have anything?
No, other than really proud of Bike and Hike for what they've done with working with Stephanie and the presentation, what's coming up. And the dog park, I think, is open.
The what, what?
The dog park is open.
Oh, good.
And the TAB committee is working really hard to create some documentation to help other committees to really understand the social media and help them figure out what their digital presence would be, so stay tuned.
Okay, thanks. Dan, do you have anything? Dan Wood?
Yeah, Ms. Zadel kind of stole my thunder a little bit, but I did want to thank our roads crews for the hard work they've been putting in just about every week since the snow has started and will continue putting in Thursday, it looks like. Even here on my street, Duane Road was kind of off to the side, it's been consistently clean. I know my neighbors all appreciate that because we feel a little, our own little place here, so, you know, my thanks to our crews. Beyond that, nothing else really to add. Thank you.
Just an observation, Dan, you look like you're sitting in a gymnasium or a fitness room or something. All that equipment.
If you say, it's just a bike on a trainer. It doesn't get used.
That's really cool. Hey Jen, you have anything?
Yeah, I have a few comments, just to give you an update on what some of the committees that I liaison for. On January 25th, the Planning Commission met and discussed the SALDO and zoning amendments that we're going to be talking about later on tonight. And also, they discussed the development on Broad, the Broad Street corridor and also development on county-owned property. On January 27th, Ways and Means met. The topics for discussion included an informational presentation from DTMA and an update on the 2020 financial statements to discuss where we landed with the budget. And they also had a discussion regarding a subcommittee on other future projects. On January 28th, the Planning Commission held a joint meeting with Doylestown Borough's Planning Commission and had a presentation of a land company regarding 280 North Broad Street and the development there. The public was invited, there were a lot of good comments and suggestions brought up during the meeting. Concerns regarding that area were increased traffic, the environmental impact of the loss of the woods in that area, the population density increase with that type of development and other developments nearby. I also wanted to ask maybe the board about their thoughts on the cycle testing, maybe this is something to bring up next meeting. But we have a 90-day extension for anyone in this cycle and I'm not sure where the county falls as far as whether they're doing the testing yet. And maybe if we need to extend that cycle testing another 90 days? Is that something that we should put on the agenda for next month or do we not have time for that?
Just so the board knows, I was intending to have that back on your March agenda to talk about the testing that, especially for the well-water testing that people are supposed to do as part of the septicage management program. So we need to get that back on your agenda. We've done some additional research, the Bucks County Health Department is not doing the water testing at this point, but some of the other providers that we use are in a similar price range so that people would be able to do that. But we'll have more information for you coming at your next meeting.
Well, my main concern with that is that we only have our next meeting, people will probably be attempting to get their water tested. So I just wanted to give them a little heads up on that. Also, I wanted to bring up... Also, I, I wanted to bring up, um, we have some amazing committees. We all know, we all get to be liaisons on these, on these committees with a lot of ideas and energy and projects, and, um, we have fantastic staff and committed, um, elected officials, and we all have all these projects that we want to work on. And I know some of the committees might want to start a project that might conflict with some other project that's going on or might be a duplicated, duplication of efforts. And I was wondering if we had some sort of, um, like protocol, procedure, um, manual to help keep these things from, um, having too, too many people doing two different projects.
Well, we shared earlier, um, we all have received the Commissions Board Handbook, Boards and Commissions Volunteer Handbook, um, was distributed early tonight, just because this question has come up, Jen, at various, um, stages, where boards and commissions, um, seem to be, um, conflicting with, you know, other boards and commissions. And anyway, the, the, the protocol is laid out here in, in the Boards and Commissions Volunteer Handbook, and I think it's, it hoes all the liaisons at their next meeting to go through, um, what, what that, you know, what that protocol is. Tonight, we're going to approve the resolution, I assume, for the park, um, and open space plan. And just simply that, I'm going to, you know, preview that plan. It's a, it is just a roadmap. It is a guide so that should there be, uh, an, you know, a, an activity that the Park Board might want to approve, the way to do it is, they would discuss the activity, they've gone through their prioritizing prod, you know, exercises. They, they decide on an activity they think is important for a park, they agree with, um, and it works with the park director, I mean, under the guidance of Karen, and it's discussed within that meeting, and there's a motion, and a, um, a, a majority of that commission moves the, the, the activity in an advisory memo to the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors then, um, decides whether it wants to do that project or not, and then it goes to, how do we pay for it? That's the, that's the, this, the way to go. And the other thing that's been happening, Jen, and I, I think you, you probably know this as well, is that members of boards and committees are asking of staff, um, uh, individual questions and asking for, uh, research and so on like that, stuff like that, which is puts a lot of time on staff members and drains resources. The, in the, in the book, handbook, it is clearly laid out, plainly laid out, that the, um, any staff requests or requests for information, um, you know, investigations or utilization of, of staff time or other resources of the township has to go through the committee as a, as a vote brought to, brought by the chairman, and the chairman then has to bring that request to this, the manager. And only then do, do, do those resources, um, come into play. So that's also in there, and I think if we address this outline and remind our boards and commissions and the chairs of the boards and commissions, how it's supposed to work, I think we might be able to keep everybody, you know, in their, in their, in their wheelhouse. Is that, is that where we were going with that, Jen?
Yeah, I, I think it's important that people stay within their wheelhouse, but also, um, to make sure that we work in concert with each other instead of conflicting with our, having projects that conflict. So I think that would be really helpful for the committees to revisit.
All right, thanks. And anything else, Jen?
Um, the only other thing that I had was, uh, that, that interested me recently is that the, the county came out with a model, um, alternative energy ordinance that, uh, I think Stephanie brought to our attention. And I was hoping that maybe we can discuss this, um, on a future agenda soon, whether next month or maybe following.
All right, we'll take a look. Do you have it, Stephanie?
Um, I shared it with the board. I've also shared it with the Planning Commission because this was a topic that the Planning Commission talked about at their January 25th meeting. So perhaps, uh, it's something that the Planning Commission could look into a little bit and then maybe make some recommendations to the board.
Yeah, that's right.
Do it that way.
That would be the right, right way to go. All right, we'll send it to the Planning Commission. Good?
Awesome.
Okay, thanks.
Can I just add on to something Jen said? Um, I had a conversation with Stephanie. I think one of the things we're missing is, I guess, unfortunately because of COVID, the lack of connectivity, um, and I think typically in December, all the committees do get a chance to meet and connect, and I think that would be, I would be hopeful that when COVID's over, maybe we can, maybe try and do that and everybody get back together.
Good idea. Good observation there, Nancy. Do you have anything, Ryan?
Um, just one, you're going to say it again, you've already said it one time, but I want to say it a third time for additional reminder, to encourage people to sign up for the public meeting for the Township Community Center. This is your opportunity to voice, um, your opinions, your suggestions, uh, what you want to see. And so we are looking for community engagement and involvement through this process. Again, it's February 25th at 7:00 PM, and I think you can go right onto, to our website and, um, you can register there. So please make sure you do that, and Barbie will be saying it again, but.
That's good.
Never hurts to say three times.
And Ryan, we are, um, had ads, uh, this past weekend and the weekend coming up, uh, in the various newspapers. We've actually added a, suggested with a QR code, and those, um, signs that you see over on the easel will be out in parks as well. So we'll catch people that way.
Great.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, the public hearings for the proposed zoning ordinance amendments. We have two, got Jeff?
If I may, uh, the board previously authorized the advertisement of the ordinance, which would amend in various parts, the zoning ordinance. Based on that direction, it was advertised in the intelligencer in accordance with the provision of Mr. Pally's planning code. Copies were sent to the Bucks County, uh, Law Library for recording as well. Copies of the proposed ordinance were sent to, again officially, to the Doylestown Township Planning Commission, was also sent to the Bucks County Planning Commission. And in addition to that, for the zoning ordinance, we also had the township staff post notices along the perimeter of the municipal property because the, there is a change in the zoning map by creating the overlay. So all of the required notices were sent, uh, and in fact, uh, we did receive back a letter from the Bucks County Planning Commission dated February 3rd. Clearly, item number one was already addressed, and I'll leave it to Judy to, if you need to, is to run through the ordinance if necessary, but also to comment on the Bucks County Planning Commission comments two through five.
Okay, Judy.
Okay, would you like me to do the BCPC comments first?
Whatever you think is appropriate.
Yeah, there is one comment that was relevant in, in the Bucks County Planning Commission, and that's with respect to short-term rental. The definition, they questioned the word eligible, and we, we suggested the word eligible be struck from the ordinance as it's an irrelevant term, and it, it modifies something that doesn't need to be modified.
Okay.
Other than that, I have, um, provided in your packet a redlined version, sort of my annotated margin notes, which I use as my crib sheet when explaining this and explaining the various ordinance amendments. I hope that was helpful for the group of you.
I don't think you need to go through them.
Good.
Okay. I'm so going to vote for a public hearing. Are there any comments from the public as to this proposed ordinance change and amendments? Does the board have any questions or comments? I see, um, Mr. Kelso, do you have any questions or comments? Member of our Planning Commission and all-around good guy. Here's muted, Tom.
There you go. There you go. No, I don't have any additional comments. I think the Planning Commission deliberated for months and months on this, and it was a, it's always a good process to go through with the Planning Commission, and it's our attempt to keep the ordinances up to date and try and stay ahead of the, what's coming at us.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. I know you've looked at this a lot. Um, anybody else have any questions or comments regarding this, the, the first ordinance?
I just want to, um, thank Judy for the redlined version. It was very helpful, and I appreciate you taking the time to do that.
You're welcome. Okay, um, can we close the hearing?
Yeah, should we close the hearing and then take a vote?
Is, there, is there a motion to approve the zoning ordinance amendments that we have here?
Subject to the modification that Judy just mentioned.
I'll make the motion subject to the modification.
I'll second the question. There's a second and a second? Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, the next is the Township's, um, SALDO ordinance.
Um, much like I just mentioned for the zoning ordinance, the appropriate notices were sent to the intelligencer, to the Bucks County Law Library, the two Planning Commissions, although because it was a SALDO amendment, there was no property that was necessary for notices to be posted. Uh, I don't recall ever seeing a letter from the Bucks County Planning Commission, so again, um, this has been, I think, digested for some time before your Planning Commission. You folks looked at it previously and authorized its advertisement. If there was any questions, Judy's here to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions from the public? Harry Nun, how about the, any members of the board have any questions, concerns, comments? Harry Nun, closing the meeting, is, I'll entertain a motion to approve the SALDO ordinance.
I'll make the motion.
And I'll second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's five and O. All right, thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Good, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, don't go too far because the next one's you two. I'm kidding. No, it's, um, it's, it's the Parks and Rec Open Space Resolution is, we saw it last time. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, and we're adopting the Doylestown Township Park Recreation Open Space Comprehensive Plan Update, closing out the Community Conservation Partnerships Grant Project BRC Tag 2328. So that's the motion. There's motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Now you can go.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Um, the next item is the Callan Track Development Agreement, which is a small project that's fronts off of, um, 611, and it's consistent with the approvals. Would request the board approve the development agreement for the Callan Track and authorize the chair to sign it when it's submitted by Mr. Callan with the appropriate funding for the guarantees.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the, um, Callan subdivision, um, agreement, development agreement?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion. Okay, any questions about it from any of you guys?
I have a small, um, correction.
Okay.
On, um, I, I don't know what, what page it is, uh, contract, but it's on our, page 173, the fourth line down.
Give me a second. Okay, hold on. Um, what page are we on, Jen? Page four?
Unfortunately, I only have our packet number, page number, it's 173.
173?
So if you're looking in the packet.
Jeff, it's right before the certif, um, certificate of completion.
Oh, okay.
Page five in your.
Page five, okay, I see it, the bottom of section seven. Uh, what change do you have?
Uh, it says dollar, D-O-L-L-A-R-D, the dollars. On the fourth line down on that page.
No, I don't, do you see it?
Fourth line from the top.
Forty-one slash $100.
Oh, okay, okay, I see it. Okay, I see it.
It's only a little thing.
Oh, dollar, okay, dollar.
At least it didn't say dullard, anyway.
I see.
Now I see it. All right, I'll fix the typo.
All right, good, good catch. Anything else? All right, with that correction, um, is, is, was there a motion a second? I forget.
Yes.
Yeah, the motion a second, um, with that correction, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Okay.
The, um, the next item is that I believe Mr. Jones is here, who is been assigned by the county, um, and also the Assistant Director of Operations is here, and the county is con, is about to embark on a project for the benefit of the, uh, Law Enforcement Virtual Training Center, which also deals, I assume, with fire service as well. And they're seeking the board to approve a waiver of land development for the improvement. And I believe they're here to describe it.
Welcome, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Jones is actually seated behind there.
Oh, who's that?
That's correct. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and good, good evening to the board. Uh, my name is Bernard Griggs.
Griggs.
And I am Project and Diversity Officer for Bucks County, a relatively new addition to the county government. And, um, I'm here tonight to just, um, talk briefly about our Law Enforcement Virtual Training Center and turn it over to Mr. Jones for the presentation. But I just wanted to take a brief moment to just let you know a little bit about myself because as the new Project and Diversity Officer, um, I oversee all capital construction projects in cooperation with general services across all departments. So in the past, you've probably been used to seeing Kevin Spencer or some of the other general services folks here. So I, I kind of work along with them. In addition to the diversity stuff, I oversee the county's diversity and inclusion program. So when I'm not doing diversity and inclusion stuff, I'm working capital construction projects. So, um, we're just delighted that you took the time to put us on the agenda to consider us a waiver for land development. And I noticed on the agenda that it mentioned a waiver of the fees, although that would be nice, that wasn't what we had originally asked, but we were more so looking for the waiver of the process, which will allow us to complete the project by the end of August of this year to be in compliance with some of the grant funding that we have. So, um, your consideration tonight here is greatly appreciated, and, um, I'll just turn it over to Joe Jones now. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, board members. I have two, um, displays. I'm not sure if, um, you can see the easel. You're probably very familiar with the project site. It's about a quarter a mile away to our southeast. Um, and it, um, it's a large site, 200 acres, I believe, and it sits the county jails, the youth detention center, and in the northwest portion of the site, on a lawn area near what's labeled the Public Safety Training Center, which you've probably seen on multiple plans from our predecessor, um, there's a lawn area, and that lawn area is where we propose to build a 5,000-square-foot pre-engineered building for this virtual training. Uh, Mr. Griggs has mentioned it's, um, virtual training, there's no live fire, it's very straightforward, and the permit package that would ultimately be submitted to the township for construction would be simply a concrete slab and foundation system. Um, a pre-engineered building would be delivered and assembled on-site. The utility requirements are, are very limited. Again, it would require an electrical service to run the simulator software, a computer, and a furnace for heat. So at this time, there are no water or sewer, uh, utilities proposed. They don't, do not need a bathroom. This is going to be, I guess, used intermittently by a group of police officers that come over for training, and there's plenty of other facilities in the area to serve those needs. We will provide, um, stub connections for any future plans that, you know, the county may have for outfitting that building if, should they decide they need a bathroom in the future, but that would be a separate permitting issue submitted to the township. Um, there is very limited, um, uh, site improvements, as I said, uh, that we see this as a very small amount of impervious surface to the overall tract. It is a large tract, it sits along the Nishamani Creek. Um, the impervious surface is, is de minimis. It doesn't make sense, in our view, to provide, uh, traditional stormwater management. Uh, we do intend to provide water quality swales and take advantage of a vegetated filter, um, for water quality. Of course, we'll adhere to whatever the township engineer may require in terms of the stormwater management. As Mr. Griggs had indicated, the project is, uh, subject to a grant opportunity which requires the expenditure to be made in August, and so we respectfully request your consideration of the waiver of land development process.
Um, in the past, boards have waived the land development process, subject to executing a mutually agreeable waiver of land development agreement to cover the things like the engineer and grading permits and other permits required. So if that condition is acceptable, the board may be prepared to proceed to grant the waiver with that condition. Mr. Jones, are you okay with that condition?
We are okay with that condition.
Okay. Okay. Well, the chair will entertain a motion to approve a land development waiver with the conditions outlined by our solicitor. And he'll draft something for that.
Yeah, I'll have it done before next meeting.
All right. Is there, is there? That's the motion.
I'll make, I'll make the motion.
That's the motion. I got a motion and I got a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions about the motion? All in favor?
I have a question, Jeff.
Taking that back. Go ahead.
Jeff, as an employee for the county, do I recuse myself for this vote?
You don't have an economic interest in the outcome, so you can certainly vote.
Thank you.
All right, you all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, okay. Five and O. You're good to go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Griggs. Welcome. Welcome to the county. So long, Mr. Jones. Thank you. Okay. That was easy. Losing my voice. Shady Retreat, Save Fruit to School Trail Supplement Number Two. Did I miss something? No.
Nope.
Nope.
Okay.
Tom.
Who's doing it? Tom?
Mr. Kelso, we reviewed this at the Bike and Hike Committee this morning. They've, you know, are in concurrence, but Tom is here to give any brief overview or questions that you may have.
Does anybody have any questions for Tom? If anyone's, everyone's read this, request for $19,550 to the bridge design and so on. Any questions? Tom, do you need to say anything? Would you like to say anything?
Just to remind people that this is part of the TAP grant that'll extend our trail from Butler down Burpee Road and out Lime Pond and over to the Hospital Drive. And the TAP grant supplies the entirety of the construction cost. The township share is the design cost. And so this is an addition of about 8% to the Baker contract for a number of relatively minor items, but they'll add to the construction cost, which will be covered by PennDOT. And it's mainly for things that came up during the review by PennDOT. The bridge surface, some structural issues. And it's PennDOT trying to put some things into the contractor that'll actually improve their facilities at the same time.
So we're approving the additional to Baker?
Correct.
And the amount of $19,550, is that the number?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. And I'll second the motion. Thank you, Nancy. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Okay, good. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. As always, Tom, thank you.
This should be out bid in the summer sometime. So we should see it starting construction this year.
All right, thank you. All right. Now the Short Road Planning Module, this is just a service. There's homes in that short road area?
It is actually just for the property at 170 Short Road. They, this is a Component Three Planning Module. It's a repair. They have a, you know, malfunctioning onlot septic system. And this is for a new facility. It is going to be what I would refer to as more of a dry stream discharge system at that location. And that is why they need to, it's considered a small flow treatment facility. And so this is their really only option to fix it.
Okay.
It'll all go to DEP for approval, but we need our approval as well.
Everybody understand the situation for these folks? Is there a motion to approve the Planning Module for 170 Short Road?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, got that. Thank you. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Aye.
All right, next item on the agenda. I'm getting there. Pebble Ridge, Woodridge Sewer Project. Their, a request from Gilmore for the payment of $211,888.59 for the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority. Dave, you need to put anything on this one? Is it good to go? All good to go?
The committee reviewed it. Dan sits in on that little subcommittee that we formed years, you know, a couple of years ago. And the committee recommended approval to the board.
Need to say anything more on that, Dan?
No, Stephanie covers it.
Okay, great. Is there a motion to approve the allocation to the Bucks County Water and Sewer Authority of $211,888.59?
Motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
All right, there's a second on Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great, thanks. Now, finally, our tax collector needs to be exonerated. He has not been able to collect taxes for, as detailed in the exoneration 2020 lien summary. The, once exonerated, those amounts or those names will go to the county for their collection.
It doesn't excuse the payment. It just, legally speaking, he has, no longer has authority to collect once the end of the tax year. So this is just to relieve him of the responsibility and place it on the Tax Claim Bureau.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the exoneration of tax collector for the 2020 lien summary report that we have in our packet?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thanks. All right, finally, the Treasurer's Report of February 16th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve the Treasurer's Report?
Motion to approve.
I'll second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the Bill's List of February 16th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
All right, there's motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, next meeting of this board is Tuesday, March 16th at 7:00. If you want to attend, let us know. We'll send you a link. The Park and Recreation Department is offering the free virtual program, Know Your Medicare options on February 17th at 6:30. Register by going to myrec.com. And the free virtual program, Know Your Medicare. Oh, I did that again. Wait. Hang on, I got to go back. I've got to repeat here. The Parks, the Public Visioning Meeting, the important Public Visioning Meeting is at the Doylestown Township Community Center, about the Doylestown Township Community Center. It's February 25th at 7:00 PM. It's via Zoom. To register, you have to contact Susan Shipman at sgsmkstdarchitects.com or you can contact here, us at Doylestown Township, and we'll get you that link. So please, everyone participate on the February 25th, 7 o'clock Zoom virtual meeting on the, on the community center. Anything else? Okay, we're good. We're all adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Night.
Good night. Good night, you two.